Ready? All right, if we can go ahead and call this meeting of the Committee of the Hold Order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Let's see, doing a roll call, we have everyone present except for Councilman Lundin. And I'm gonna ask that we, I've noticed there's one of us that has an issue with going on their phones and stuff like that. And so, I'd like to have everybody up here at the council, let's put the cellphones away. And I don't want to see them out during the meetings, please, so.
Can we say that at the start of the next meeting, too?
We will, yes.
Okay.
So that way, everybody hears it, right?
Yes.
Everybody that needs to hear it.
Yep.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to our agenda here, give me one second. All right, we have a E1, the concept plan for Johnson Meadows PUD.
Public comment, Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Do we have any public comment tonight? I got so worked up over the cellphone issue, I missed that one. All right, let's move on to E1, concept plan for Johnson's Meadow PUD.
Okay, good evening, committee. We have a concept plan for Johnson Meadows PUD. Johnson's Meadows is on the east side of 65, you'll see it here, just south of the Crayola Kids Child Care Center. It's a PUD concept plan that'll be presented to you guys tonight, as well as the Planning Commission. It's a project that is 16.03 acres and includes 43 single-family lots, which is 3.95 units per acre, which up to six is allowed, so it's much less dense than what is allowed in the zoning district. The average lot size is 11,000 square feet, with a minimum lot size of 7,500 required in the zoning district. The proposed setbacks being requested are the front 25 feet, with 30 feet required in the zoning district. Side are eight feet, with 18 feet. Street-side yard, and required in the zoning district, it's 10 feet and 20 feet, respectively. In the rear, they're requesting 25 feet, with 30 feet required in the zoning district. You can see the layout here, is an extension of Seventh Avenue going to the south, as well as two new public roads that will be going east to west, with one ending in a cul-de-sac. We will be requiring a temporary cul-de-sac on the South, on the Seventh Avenue Northeast Road on the south end to meet the standard 90-foot requirement, as we've discussed in the past, that we don't have a dead-end road for emergency services and snow plowing purposes. The fire chief has also requested that both new roads extending to Eighth Avenue eliminate the cul-de-sac on the south road. So, that public road, you can see the half-bulb, eliminating that and just extending it through, like the one to the north, to increase access for emergency services. The width between the roads, I believe to the south, is only 250 feet. The city likes to require approximately 300 feet between intersections to prevent stacking or issues of turning. But due to the limited number of vehicles on this road that are expected, due to the number of houses in the short distance, the city engineer said he would not have an issue with this if you were to decide to make that change or recommendation to the developer. I don't know if Jason has anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, that's just the topic, is the city ordinances are 300-foot blocks, so that's why, you know, they laid it out to meet our requirements. The northern one was the selected road to connect, because the bottom right corner of the screen there is an existing road as it is. So if that southern, the one that's currently a cul-de-sac, was changed to a connecting street, it'd be fairly close to the next intersection down. And we just like to limit that, to have just too many all right next to each other. But like we say, if this ends up with only eight or nine homes on it, I don't, I don't know that there'll be that big of a conflict. It's just, you know, that's why it's currently laid out, to meet our requirements. But the fire chief had mentioned wanting to have those connect for safety, so I guess it's posed to you guys for what you'd prefer.
So Matt, I have a question for you. I know during my plow ride along, the cul-de-sacs were a big issue. Would you rather see this, both these, straight through, or would you rather have that cul-de-sac?
Well, Mayor Collins, we have a couple different issues there. There's not a lot of snow in that cul-de-sac to put snow, because the sidewalk is right there. And I am always not a big fan of cul-de-sacs.
Sure, yep. So Jason, I know I personally and a lot of residents are worried about Eighth Avenue, with how busy that's going to be once it's developed. You said it's, it's a little bit off from city standard right now. Do you see, once that's fully developed, have you thought about the traffic impacts that might have if we have two streets going through right there? Is that something that's still probably not a concern?
Well, I mean, it's not ideal. You know, that's why we're kinda recommending the one connection scenario that was as far away from the other ones as it could be. You know, the only reason that I would say in this case, it, you know, isn't gonna be a terrible traffic scenario is just how few vehicles would likely use the intersection. So, it's just, the specific intersection won't be highly used, I don't think, as opposed to, you know, Eighth being busy. So, it's, it's not one of our, like, both roads would have high traffic counts that would turn into a congested intersection. But, you know, we also want to kinda keep that standard of keeping our spacing at that 300-plus, just so it doesn't get overly congested, so.
Okay, is there, you don't see any other practical way to lay this out to meet that 300 feet because of that other street on the bottom right? There's really no other way, is there?
Correct, yeah, the spacing between the road that exists to the northern edge of the entire, you know, screen there, and then that existing stub that's at that south corner, there's only, you know, so many feet between them. So essentially, you know, you either only, you only get one connection to meet the 300-foot-plus spacing. And, you know, if you want to go to two connections, they're gonna be closer. The only other, the other benefit of this scenario is, it isn't a, you know, full intersection with any roads going to the east at these locations. So, you know, it's not cross-traffic, it'd only be a T-intersection at both of them.
And I think that other, that other little street, what is it, Commerce? But I think, isn't that just like a tiny little, like maybe a few houses down there, or something like that?
There's two houses.
Is there two houses down there?
Right, so currently, that's all it's used for, but it is plotted as a road, and it's laid out as a roadway.
Okay.
And so if the development to the south were to get that to be a connection, that actually could be a more significant access point to that parcel to the south of this.
Okay.
Should that actually be able to get, you know, the road get built through there. But that would, you know, that topic of ultimate full build-out of the area, I would see that one being more busy than either of the two, you know, intersections we're talking about right now, in the end.
So would it be smart to prioritize and say that maybe that development down there is gonna need that space more than this one would need the second through? I mean, if you're worried about that one being a larger development, needing that access for more traffic, would it be smarter to save that for that sort of reason?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I think the original discussions on this was that exact layout topic, of why that one was chosen as a cul-de-sac bulb, as, you know, to be able to leave that space available for that one to become a future, more significant intersection. With that said, it's gonna significantly depend on how the developer to the south wants to connect roads. You know, that one may never turn into anything, and it may just be those three homes, you know. And then the whole other parcel just plats all the way around it, and it, it's never used. But we just don't know.
Is the proposed pond, is that currently wetland?
No.
What if they moved that pond north and split these two, put that pond more where the road is, and then put a road further south?
Right, so, so the idea of, you know, trying to use that access that's to that bottom right corner, you know, was discussed, but that, there's a small little triangle of land that is not this developer's property. And, and so that Commerce Drive can't get rerouted across the south side, because you'd be crossing an adjacent property owner. And, and they weren't able to, you know, work out property ownership for that. So, so right now, that Commerce, you know, doesn't line up to be used on this parcel.
The developer is here, if you'd like to ask any questions.
Okay, and you're just looking for us to kinda have some discussion on this prior to the Planning Commission meeting tonight, right, so?
We're one step further, and hopefully your questions are answered, and it'll be...
Sure.
Allow them to be better prepared to...
Okay.
Save them money, hopefully, with going back and forth with engineering.
Yeah, if you'd like to come forward, we'd... We just need your name and address for the record, and...
Steve Stramlin, 987-249th Avenue.
Okay. Yeah, do you guys have any questions for, for Steve?
So I see out lot A for future development. Do you have, is that basically, you're just going to see how the first one goes? And then do you have any, I guess, on how many lots you might put in that at some point as well?
It's capable of five.
Five, okay.
We had it laid out for five, but we're just...
Okay.
Uncertain the best use of that piece, I guess, at this point.
Sure.
It needs a bunch of fill also, so...
Any other questions, when...
My only concern is, is that south road, too.
So the way this is laid out, would we have that cul-de-sac bulb in there, and then it'd still be attached to the street, so that if we needed to shut that, that entrance or exit off, we'd have the cul-de-sac already there? Is that how that's laid out, or would it be one or the other?
Right, well, that, yeah, that southern cul-de-sac essentially would be a full standard bulb. There'd be, you know, a 15-foot grass boulevard. And then you'd essentially hit the right-of-way of Eighth Avenue, where that, there's a, is there a walk on the west side? So there's a walk there, and then, you know, so essentially you'd have a road with a cul-de-sac bulb, some green space, a walk, some more green space, and Eighth Avenue. So there wouldn't be any structures or anything in between, but there'd be full curb divided off with a walk going through the middle.
So would it be, I mean, if we're worried about Commerce Street northeast in the future, would it be beneficial to do the cul-de-sac bulb, but have it still attached to Eighth Avenue, so it can be used for now, and then shut off later, or just, do you just leave the space open? I mean, would that give us a little bit of flexibility, say if we see Commerce gets developed heavily, and there's a bad traffic problem there, we could just throw in a curb there? And then you still already have the infrastructure for the cul-de-sac already there? Is that something that would be reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, it could either be just plotted with the cul-de-sac right-of-way, and then only build the road straight through right now?
Yes.
And then if Commerce turns into a significant road, we have the right-of-way to be able to convert it to a cul-de-sac in the future?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be an option, or build the whole cul-de-sac bulb, but still have it connect, and only have to disconnect that one piece. You know, both, you know, perfectly, perfectly good ideas.
I would say build the cul-de-sac, and then shoot that road through. It gives these people a little bit more parking, kids love to play on the road, or off the road.
That's true.
And Steve, what would you prefer to do? I mean, what's, if you had your way, I mean, would you rather just build that straight through, or what are your, what are your thoughts?
I guess my preference would be to pick one way or the other.
Sure.
I think it would be a little odd to be kinda both. Especially if that cul-de-sac, well, either way, the, you know, if a cul-de-sac bubble wasn't built at all now, those last two lots would have a lot deeper setback, and a lot deeper front yard than the rest of them. I don't know, I kinda see it both ways. I think people would prefer to live on a cul-de-sac street that's not through. But, the other way works for me, too. I just need to shift my lot lines to the west, because I'm a little short on frontage on Lot 10 if I don't shift them. I got room to shift them over, you know, if that's the way they want it, you know.
Okay.
The cul-de-sac, I guess if it was to go through and no bubble at all, if we could live with a little smaller bubble on the south, the temporary bubble would be nice. But if you can't, you can't. You know, because there's only that short distance from that intersection. We'd have a bubble there, just not quite as large, because that, putting that temporary bubble in there pushes those four houses back. Otherwise, those lots would just be unusable until and when that street continues, which might be next year, 25 years. So, as far as through or not, I, that's my two views.
So I have a question on the, so the lot size, we're under four per acre, which is good. I would personally like to see less, but I'm happy that's at least under the zoning requirement. But you're still asking for setback, smaller setbacks, even though the lots are larger? Is there a reason for that?
The width, 60-foot is the, the required width, or, you know, I mean, the minimum required width. I could make them wider, but the, the, it allows me to get three-car garages if, if wanted on that 60-foot width.
Okay.
Kinda need that 44 feet to get, you know, the front door and another usable part of the house, and a, and a third stall garage. And that two feet, that two feet on each side, to get it eight instead of 10, and then on a corner lot, that two feet would be the 18 instead of the 20.
Okay.
So that's the biggest reason, not to say they're all gonna be three-car garage, but I think it's good to lay it out that way.
Okay.
And, to me, it seems like there'd be less room on the side of the garage for them to put stuff.
Is that a, is that a problem? Have we ever had a problem with lots being too close together for either storm sewer or anything like that?
We have had lots, we've, our lowest setback for side setbacks has been five feet, which we did then in turn realize later that seven feet is the minimum side setback if we don't want to increase the need for fire safety walls between the homes. So, our new internal minimum is seven feet, is what we're at least requiring. And so, many of our newer developments in PUDs do go down to the eight feet.
Okay, and then the, the front setback, I believe, was 25 instead of 30? Was there a reason for that as well?
A lot depth in a few cases. The, the side yard setback is more important than, the reduction in the side yard setback is more important than the front.
Okay.
And I guess if I was to give up one of the three, the first one would probably be... Depending on which lot.
Right.
You know, I mean, I'd prefer to have the 30-foot whenever it works, because it gives more distance from the street.
Okay.
So if it had to be one or the other of those two, I would say probably the rear, just, you know, because there's about three lots that it kinda gets tight, front and back.
Okay. Jason, do you, do you see any problem with any of the setbacks in this, in this specific area? Are you okay with it, with the, even though it doesn't exactly meet our city's requirements?
So, wherever we'd have actual storm pipe, we would have to have a wider easement, and that would end up with a wider setback, just because they wouldn't be able to build in an easement. So we would protect our storm pipes and our access to our infrastructure with wider easements, where those would be special cases, instead of this is kinda the standard setbacks that we're kinda talking about. So on all the standard ones, where we don't have pipe, and all they gotta do is kinda grade to the property line, and then get the water to drain, you know, that's seven feet from either side, you know, is tight. But as long as the elevations are pretty much even with each other, it can work.
Okay.
Where the pipe, storm pipes and stuff are, what kind of an easement width do you think you need there?
I think we call it 10 feet on either side for... From the, yeah, assuming it's running on the property line. Where usually we have the five-foot, and we'd still want the five-foot easement on all the other lots, even if the setback's seven. So, it'd just be going from the five with the 10.
Either you spread them out, or it would cut into the, would reduce the lot buildable width, or we need to try to spread the lots somehow in the areas where you want it?
Wherever you run a storm pipe, yeah, that lot, the lots on either side would essentially need to have that extra three feet.
10-foot setback, basically, so that you got your 10-foot easement.
Yeah.
And how, I mean, roughly, would that be, in this size of development, what, maybe two lots? That you'd have to consider that sort of thing for? Or how many would that be for that?
Three at least.
Three at least, okay.
Two at least, two, at least two going into the west pond. Well, it should be four, because there's two going to the west pond, one coming into the east pond, and then one, in a sense, going in, coming out, you might say, on the east pond. So it'd be four instances where that, we'd have to move it 10 to 10, or lose our lot width, buildable lot width.
Sure, okay. Does that sound reasonable, to be able to work with something like that?
Yeah, my engineer thought, because of the depths of the pipes, they're not that deep, that the 16 and, or the eight and eight would be enough, but... Because we had looked at that, but...
Sure.
I think we got a little room to move on.
I mean, is eight and eight doable, Jason?
I mean, I guess, we'd just have to individually analyze it. I mean, for that exact reason you just referenced, if the storm pipes are less than six feet deep, and, you know, and it's just a short enough route. The other, being able to dig back up the pipe, and, you know, operate a backhoe and function between the buildings, is the biggest concern. Depth is a critical part of that, because of how wide your trench needs to get. So, that's why we go with the 10 either side as our default. You know, if they're able to bring to us and show that they're only four feet deep, and we can go down to eight foot on either side, it's possible. It's just, again, I don't really recommend narrowing up our access to pipes and functionality to be able to replace them in the future, if we can at all help it.
Especially with the sandy soil here, that, when you dig, it collapses. So I've, I've actually dug in a 20-foot area between buildings, four foot deep, and you're, it's, it's pretty, pretty tough, so...
The other thing I'd mention, and, yeah, it is a lot for the equipment, fitting the equipment through, when we go to do maintenance in the pond, which arguably, that doesn't have to be in, over every storm pond. But the other thing is, if they have a five-foot setback for putting in a fence, between that fence and their house, having three feet is kind of a narrow area. Five feet seems to be a little bit better of having a side yard between their house and the fence.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be frank here, I'm, I'm, I'm a little nervous about these with the, they're so close for future infrastructure, that does really worry me personally, but that's just my opinion on it.
We should be able to have access roads to both ponds. One from, coming from Eighth. And on the other side, the west side, there's a pipeline easement all the way along my west property line. The pipe's been pulled, but currently the easement doesn't, at this point, isn't gonna be vacated. So we can't build or put pond underneath it. So there'll be a pretty wide, a 50-foot, 50 or 55-foot strip that could be also used as access for maintenance to the ponds. Doesn't do any good for the, each couple pipes coming in there. But to access the pond itself, I think, could be provided pretty well on both of those.
Okay.
And then that small one on the north, it's parallel to the street, right there, the one up by the daycare there. So, that's adjacent to a street with no lots in between the street and it.
Josie, I have a question for you, if that's okay? You said, say if somebody puts fences up between these houses, and we can't get access to them, what do we do then, if we can't get access to something? Do we ask them to take the fences down, so we can get equipment in there? Or how has that ever happened in the city in the past?
It has come up for concern, for fences that went up without approval, or passed approval that didn't, take that into account, into what the rules were. We know that those ones, we have them marked, we know that they can be an issue. So far, they have not, we have not had to have anyone take it out. But it does say within city code, if you put it in easement, in the kind of utility easement, and the city does need access, it is on their responsibility as a homeowner to pay to move the fence. If they refuse to move the fence, we would remove the fence for them, and we would bill them the time to do so.
Most fences are built on the lot line typically, aren't they? And most people don't leave a five-foot yard.
Unless there's a storm pipe, a storm pipe, we don't allow them to put on the storm pipe. But otherwise, yes.
And I basically had that same situation, I think, actually adjacent to my property there. And, and I think we pulled, I think, five feet off of that, that line, so we had 10 on either side, and that's where we put the fence, too, right? So, so, yeah, so it's, it's not, you know, it's not the end of the world as far as wanting to put a fence in or anything, but... Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I don't, I don't have any problem with the setbacks, you know, being where they're at, where you're asking them to be. And, you know, I think maybe we should probably stick to the 10, you know, 10 on either side of the, of the storm drains. But, but I don't have any problem with the other setbacks being an issue. And then, I think, you know, you, you... I think, what, what do you, you tell me, you tell me what you want, and I'll be for it.
I kinda like it the way it is.
Okay.
I think it kinda compromised. I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna put a so-called legal-sized bubble currently on the south, the temporary one. And I think it gives a little, so not every street's a through street, you know? I don't, you know, Seventh is gonna already be, if it ever extends, quite a through one. So, my preference would be to leave it the way it is.
Okay. Then that'll be what I'll, I'll be pushing, then, is, is to, to do the, the, allow the less setbacks, and to, to go ahead and do the cul-de-sac as it's drawn there, so...
I guess I would, I would vote the opposite on that, because the fire chief and public works wouldn't rather not have that a cul-de-sac. That's my opinion on that. I think, I, I think the best way to do it would be to, I see this map, and I kinda see that road already goes through, and then you have a cul-de-sac there, if, worst case, you have to use it. And I, and like George said, I think it's, it'd be a nice place for kids to play on the street there, if they wanted to put a basketball hoop or something in that cul-de-sac area, or... I don't know if that, it seems like a compromise, but it's, it's a little weird, but...
If it's a through cul-de-sac, I don't think it would be a so-called bad place to be playing basketball. In a normal cul-de-sac, yeah, that's how that happens, I'd say that's true.
Okay.
And that's the plus to somebody wanting to live on one. But if it was a through street, I think it would be a weird situation. You know, I mean, I don't, that part of it anyways.
The bulb would not exist if it was a through street.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying a through street with the bulb, though. So in the future, if, say, we have to shut, if, if for some reason that becomes an issue, because it's too close to the other intersections, if Commerce Street's developed, then all we gotta do is put a curb, just to stop, so it's basically, actually becomes a cul-de-sac then. That was, that was what I was, that's what I got from this drawing. I thought that's how it was set up already, because it doesn't look like a...
It goes to the end, partially because we gotta tie into the water main there.
Okay.
To loop the water main, otherwise the water main would be dead-end for, for, for a long time, until it develops.
Okay.
So, we had to go to the, there with the water main, and that's kinda what initially got that one connecting in the first place.
Gotcha.
Can Lot 10, can you keep that driveway as far east as possible? Or as far, actually...
West.
West, so that if we have to pile snow at the end of that cul-de-sac, that we could use that space? Because if you have the driveway...
So garage right, then it would be considered.
I mean, that would be my only, uh...
Yeah, there's not...
That'd be a good compromise, it'd give Matt on a very snowy year a little extra room. Because otherwise, what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to haul that snow out, and that's time-consuming. We've, we have to do that in a few other cul-de-sacs in town, and...
That, that's a little deceiving when you look at that, because that's the right-of-way, not the paved area. So there is a pretty good boulevard, like Jason says, a typical boulevard around there, even though... A typical boulevard around there, even though that cul-de-sac is brought to the end, there's still a boulevard around the new paved cur- or paved cul-de-sac. And there's also a space from the sidewalk in, you know?
Sure.
There's a pretty good green space once that pavement is in there left around that bubble. I would think it would almost be better than, on a typical bubble, you'd have driveway, 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 driveway all the way around. At least there's no driveways straight off the east end.
Yeah, that's true.
Travis, what are your thoughts on this? Do you see any problems with this from a public safety perspective with the cul-de-sac versus a straight through or?
No, I mean, the only thing I'd say is our biggest complaint in all our neighborhoods is speed, right? So anytime you don't have through road, those complaints on, would be lessened. But as far as, that would be the only thing I'd add to that as far as public safety. We talked about before on other plot recommendations, we drive little cars, not big trucks, so we'll get to where we need to go.
So for, for the future, I assume Seventh Avenue is gonna be fairly developed. Is there a potential that there will be too much traffic on that road and then we would have to, I mean, maybe it would help to alleviate that on the Eighth? I'm just trying to think thirty years down the road, when this is all developed, is there? I don't know, I just don't wanna tie our hands with anything at this point.
If that commerce street is developed someday, if, you would think it would intersect Seventh at some, you know, with, before it went all the way south to five, otherwise, you know, if, if that's what it's, how it gets used.
I think you're gonna have, you know, a lot of people are gonna come off of five on that northern boulevard by, by the gas station now, too. I would think that will extend up into that developed area, you know, where Wayne's got that property, so. So I think you're gonna have more people are gonna be coming off from that direction than they ever will from, you know, the other way. But, yeah, I mean, Jeff, any questions at all, or?
I had, is this all private money? Is there any government money going towards this project? I would say that if we can keep as much traffic off of the intersection of Golden Way and Seventh Avenue where the daycare and the apartment building is, the better. That's, I was actually leaning towards pushing that road through with the cul-de-sac to alleviate future traffic from over by the apartment and the daycare, but.
That's kinda what I'm thinking, too.
There's, at least, there's at least one other entrance from Eighth Avenue instead of just the Seventh Avenue entrance. So either way, it's not a make or break. I just thought pushing it through would have been easier.
What if we eliminate the connection to that intersection? That's not in the big plan. So the big plan creates intersections and busy spots, so, I mean, yeah, that'd be, that'd be a good deal, you know? Quiet down.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Yeah, and I can see the value in having that go straight through though, too, yeah.
I, I think that daycare is gonna get busy.
Yep. I think the whole area is gonna get pretty busy.
Yeah.
I, I'm a little worried about that, to be honest.
I mean, what are you guys saying? Do you, I mean, would you be okay saying, well, let's not extend Seventh Avenue through there and let's, you know, if you wanted to go out where the cul-de-sac is instead? I mean, would you prefer that or?
I wouldn't.
Yeah.
Eighth is, that's not, not good. A little over there, especially off of five.
Yeah.
Not, not a good situation at all right there, so I think you have to have Seventh. I would never approve without that, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think it makes, it makes more sense, because I mean, you can have those apartments up there to them and then you can just kinda get everybody, you know, split up a little bit, but.
Hopefully it helps, this, hopefully this will help with the Eighth issue.
Yeah.
I, I hope.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, if, I, I know we have this on planning tonight and everything like that, I mean, any other discussion that you wanted to, to kinda guide us in for this meeting at all tonight? Or you wanna wait till planning or, or Steve, if you have any other questions for us, or?
I think we can wait until Planning Commission and get the other feedback from the commissioners and, as long as you have a clearer direction of where you're headed.
Yeah, it's just a clear direction how that, you know, on the cul-de-sac because we're gonna, we're finishing up our plans, have to get it submitted.
Yeah, and I think we can have a decision for you tonight when, when we've got, we've got two other people that'll be here too, and I don't know, I don't think Steve's gonna be here for it, but.
Okay.
But, yeah, so I think, well, we should have a decision tonight on that then, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to E two, Public Safety Aid. And I don't know if, who wants to, what's that? Maybe Travis, if you wanna kinda introduce this, and what'd you say?
The two chiefs should be rock, paper, scissors.
Arm wrestling. All right, Mayor Cal, so, so we've talked about the Public Safety Aid Bill from two thousand twenty-three, last year, just bringing it back to you as well. Sent some, should have a memo up there, some information on it. The intent behind that legislative is enhance, enhance public safety across state of Minnesota. Just listed out the public safety numbers for Isani County as far as the public safety funding that was received in two thousand twenty-three. The calculation's based, that was based on population, you know, so the city of Isani has X amount of people, that's how they broke it all down. As far as the county, they had the population of Isani, Cambridge, Bram, plus the population of the county. So in essence, it's paid out twice, once to us, once to the sheriff's office, just so that's how that breakdowns, that makes sense? They, our residents got paid out to the city of Isani as well as the county of Isani as well. Kind of an interesting formula, but looking into that, that's how that played out. Next page, I just, one of the topics was officer wellness, and we brought that up several times. I just wanna lay out the numbers at the bottom of that page that we've never actually discussed. Those are our working comp premium for the last few years, since two thousand sixteen. Since two thousand eighteen, we were at twenty-two thousand dollars. Last year, we were at a hundred, so that's an eighty thousand dollar increase. So the question is why? If you look at, in the past five years, we've had five officers retire from medical issues, four of them were injured on duty or injuries on duty. So that's why last one, two budget cycles, we've had a small smidgen in there and it's trying to do our officer wellness piece of the puzzle to try to alleviate some of that as well as officer retention and just wellness of work. So we've worked with iHealth, having movement fitness type thing for injury prevention. They, all our officers are required to go down there, do a movement assessment to see where, what their physical lackings were, per se, were they're injury prone and what to do. But we're sending them down to St. Louis Park, they all went once, and that's part of the program, trying to see how we can enhance it. Because looking at these numbers from a five-year span of an eighty thousand dollar per year increase, I mean, there's a fiscal piece of that puzzle, but we also have the responsibility to try to alleviate some of these work-related injuries. And in four cases, career-ending work-related injuries. We also work with the mental health providers as well, but we're just dabbling into that. We don't have enough funding to actually go full force into actually both of those wellness programs, so. And that next page is actually the line items of proposed funding expenditures. The technology and equipment, the first two items on there. Body camera system and eight hundred megahertz radios. No matter what happens with this funding, we'll be expending those funds within this year. We'll have to find it somewhere else. I mean, I'm just saying, those are things we don't have a choice with. We talked about the body camera thing, I think, the last time, just the issues that they're not supported. As well as we're, need six more encrypted radios to actually be in compliance with the encryption changeover. So those two items themselves is around four, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's about half of that funding. Outside of that, like I said, we prioritized, you know, different things in there, the officer wellness piece. We have Emergency Operations Center, and we, we didn't have one, we had one, we didn't have one, now we have an agreement again. We put in for grants before and haven't been awarded them, so I think that's a strong priority to have that facility and open operational so we can be self-sufficient. Because if, depending on our agreement with the sheriff's office, their E O C is in their squad room, like their patrol officer squad room, so we have an agreement to utilize that if they have room in there. So that's one of those priorities. We, with our new building, we purchased around three hundred and fifty dollars worth of office furniture to move into our new building, because we didn't have any money appropriated to that. So some of that funding for the E O C furniture as well as, uh, training furniture would be part of that. And I think in that, that's around, say, fifteen thousand dollars, just in reference, when we did the one cubicle out here, I don't know, Jimmy, if you remember what that funding was, around seventeen thousand dollars for a cubicle.
Actually, that's, it, almost always I have the number on the top of my head, but this is one I, I don't remember.
But I think it's somewhere there, so that, just trying to at least.
It wasn't cheap, I don't think.
Find some funding, because it is, you know, I sat down with the mayor, oh, the year, last year, went through our police budget, and, and he can attest to me, we don't have anything in our police budget other than what we need to have in there. There's no enhancement. You look at the public safety funding is to enhance law enforcement, but we don't have any enhancement funding to say, hey, let's get stuff that will help do our job better, have equipment that works, help retain our officers and have them wanna work here. You know, because that's part of the retention piece. I mean, you don't wanna go to work and have stuff that actually works and enhance your, your job. So I don't know if you wanna go through all this piece of the puzzle. I mean, the other piece on there that I think is a priority is our, is the active shooter response pieces, where we don't, we don't have an S R T team in, in Isani right now. And those are the, the safety equipment for active shooter response that I would like to have every officer that's driving around, taking calls, have it with them in their squad. So that they are equipped and prepared to handle active shooter events. So I do, you know, it's a huge priority. We don't have, again, we don't have the extra funding to go purchase all that equipment out of our budget, so that's where public safety fund to enhance law enforcement would be a good piece to enhance. And that's, you know, all these pieces of the puzzle, as far as equipment, is to actual enhance. You know, we wanna enhance that, that priorities that we can serve and actually enhance what our officers can do with a minimum, minimal resources. So like I said, these are, we had a bigger list, we tried to just narrow it down to some of these more top priorities. Obviously, the number at the bottom is bigger than the funding we have, right? I mean, it is, so we still have to prioritize which ones are the prioritized to enhance, if that makes sense.
I have a question on a couple of these. The thermal imaging, you know, under technology and equipment, what is that one exactly?
So like last week, weekend, we had that, we had an issue where a juvenile with a lot of issues ran away and actually runs from law enforcement, fights from us. And it was, that was last Sunday night, I believe, you know, zero degrees. So we were able to actually get Trooper Nine to come up at some point to, with their FLIR, but it's like there's units that mount to the spotlight that are actually FLIR. And they show up, so stuff like that, as well as handheld thermal imaging to, say, locate that person or whatnot. Like, we have officers, for example, you have car prowlers, they get a call that, well, you know what it's like, drive through a neighborhood with your squad car and try to find somebody hiding.
Sure.
Now, granted, we can still drive through the neighborhood and look for them, won't find them, and again, to enhance that approach to law enforcement, these are tools that can enhance. Now, these tools are never gonna be put on a budget line item, right? Because I can't say that this is a necessity that we have to have to do our job. But again, under the intent with that legislative money, what can we do to enhance? Now, that, that, like, that exact sample you have, how many officers would it take to find those people hiding? It'd take more than we have, so we can force multiply by technology enhancements to actually do a better job with less people.
Yep, okay, and then the drone, the thermal drone, is that basically for the same type of situation?
Same thing. The county has one.
Okay.
Now, we haven't had good luck, because they only have a couple operators on, they're not on all the time.
Sure, so with the, with the training and certification, is that something that maybe you could have someone at the county just show you briefly how to use it, or do you have to do?
Not that easy.
No, it's not.
Because they have to be licensed through the F F A, and it's a bigger.
With, because it's a thermal one?
Nope, just because of the size of the drone.
Okay.
And the height it goes, so if that go, my, my idea would be, again, like with the ballistic stuff, to make sure that every, if we have somebody working, we have somebody that can operate that piece of technology every day.
I think that has to be renewed every year too, doesn't it? Or is it every couple of years, every two years? Yeah.
The fire department.
So not that often, huh?
The fire department, what is it, a year ago, two years ago? Had, had a F A A class at Station Three, so there's quite a few drone operators on the fire department.
When was the last time we've had a circumstance within city limits that we, we would actually really need that type of resource without the county already being involved and the sheriff department already being here helping you out?
Yeah, like last Sunday, they were helping out, but there was nobody that had that equipment that was able to utilize it.
And it, it took some time to, to get it done, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've pulled in every resource, the fire department, stayed to rescue every person we could. Yeah, but as far as like that technology that the county has, just the way it's sitting somewhere and they only have two people that operate it.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I would worry about that one myself, because that stuff's gonna, if it becomes damaged or outdated, I mean, it's just like the, the body cameras and the radios, they're making that stuff outdated left and right just to make more money. So that, that would be one thing I would worry about with something like that. And the same thing with the body camera systems, it's, just seems asinine to have to replace those all the time for that amount of money, is.
And with body, you know, we first looked at it, you know, there's different functions, you can function through the ones where you pay your monthly fee per user, per squad, for perpetual, forever, right? And so that would be, if you actually look at it from a fiscal response, you would have to just say, body cameras for officers, which in today's date, we have to. It's hard to say we, we have to. You can't look at it that it's a purchase this year, but never again. It, it's gonna be, whatever we break it down, it's an annual ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar for the rest of our existence. Whether we buy it outright like we did or not. Now, like when we looked at Exxon, they give you new equipment, so you need to upgrade the equipment, but you're still paying that monthly fee every year for the rest of whatever. Then when you leave and go through a different vendor, now they have your data, so you're still paying a fee with that vendor for ever to store your data.
Did, did I hear correctly then, so if. If you receive these funds in full, did you say you would have full discretion, your, the police department as chief, to spend the money as you like?
No, that's, you're at the council.
And I think, I think maybe I should have framed that a, a little bit, you know, before we even got into this discussion, but I think more of the discussion is, is do we, and, and Al will give you a chance to speak here too. And, and I'm gonna really depend on you guys that aren't on the fire department, which is, I guess, you two, and Jeff, Jeff can make up his own mind on what, what approach he wants to take. But it, it's hard for me as being on the fire department to, to be in, a neutral source on this, you know what I mean? So I don't know how I would feel if I wasn't on the fire department, I don't know how I, you know, so I mean, it's, it's just, so I'm gonna depend on, on your guys' thoughts on this. But, but really what I think, you know, Travis has a list of items here that he could use the money for, and Al and, and the fire department would, would like to maybe have a share of some of these dollars or, or maybe they've got another approach in mind. But, but anyway, that's kind of more, I think, what we're here to decide tonight for the most part, once you say, I mean, is, is where do we wanna allocate this money? And not necessarily exactly how do we wanna spend it, but, but, but what we've got here is kind of a list of things that I think we, you know, Travis could use it for. So, so, yeah, so go ahead, Travis, I just, I think, just so you guys kinda know, we don't have to decide, okay, yeah, this money needs to go to this today or this needs to go to that. That's not really what we're here to discuss right now, so.
It was good to have a discussion, just understand.
Yeah.
The piece of the puzzle that's there.
The hundred and twenty-two thousand fire state aid, supplemental state aid, is that new aid this year for the fire department or, or is it increased?
Travis.
No, it's the fire state aid and the supplemental state aid for all the.
Al, Travis, did you have anything else you wanna add before we have, and then we can kinda let Al give him some time to speak here and?
No, you can speak, and I mean, discuss after.
Okay. All right, Al, so, yeah, if you wanna maybe kinda give us a breakdown of what you got here and, and that kinda thing, that'd be great.
Mayor Council, for those who don't know me, Al Jankovic, Fire Chief. So great explanation by Travis on public safety aid. I think it's important to remember the key word he used a lot is enhancement. My personal opinion is the money is to enhance public safety, which is both. My personal opinion is the money is to enhance public safety, which is both police and fire, so I'm not here to try to take money away from Travis's Police Department. Those guys work very hard, and they deserve to have enhancements given by the state, just as much as a fire department does. So, how you guys determine that money should, could, will be shared, is absolutely your call. The money was dispersed to the city of Isani, which is you all to decide how you wanna enhance public safety in your city. My job or my goal here tonight is to give you some options. If you would like to enhance public safety in the realm of fire protection, that's, that's why I'm here. So, my, my handout that I shared tonight is two-sided, and one side, I think we've got a pretty good feel for what the state statute describes, as far as how it can be spent, eligible and ineligible expenses. And I'm sure you know, I don't remember if Travis mentioned it, but your allotment for public safety aid was a one-time fee, or one-time gift, I guess we'd call it, of three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. So, as Travis alluded, some expenses or some items that he would like to enhance public safety in the city, I also listed some items that we could consider for the fire department side. So, I talked to some people, and as far as splitting it up, and I don't mean to get the cart before the horse here, if you do decide to split it up, the next question's going to be how? Seventy-five, twenty-five, or an arm wrestle, or I, I don't know, however you decide to do it, but a few different ideas are fifty-fifty. If it was fifty-fifty, my brief calculation, there is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand apiece. If you were to divide it up using our, our fire department formula, how we share our budget between the city of Isani and the six townships that we service, the city pays for thirty-nine percent of the fire district's entire budget. So, if you use that thirty-nine percent and calculated it against the three hundred and seven thousand, it'd be a hundred and thirteen thousand and change. So, either way, those two calculations are above and beyond one hundred thousand dollars each. So, I, I listed some priorities on the bottom of page two there. And without getting into the details of two through seven, I would like to discuss number one there. We bought, or are buying, our Station One, right now, as you know, which is a building that we currently share with the PD. We bought it on a, a contract to make payments over five years, until we have the building paid off, then we would take ownership of the building. The year twenty twenty-four is payment four of five. I would, I was brought to the idea, and I'd like to share it with you all, to consider waiving that final fee of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or that final payment in trade for this public safety aid, which would mean when we are billed our final payment this April, we could potentially take ownership of that building this year, and then leave that entire three hundred and seven thousand dollar sum for the PD side. Just an idea. Other priorities include communication equipment, as Travis alluded, extremely expensive. Either one of us could easily spend that entire budget on communication equipment. Luckily, we don't have body cameras on our firefighters like they do, so we don't have that expense. A good example of how expensive it is is one firefighter pager on line number three, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents for a pager. So, this stuff is very expensive.
I have a question on that one, if, if you don't mind. So, is that with the technology and pretty much everybody having a smartphone, is that pager, is something that could be replaced with just a smartphone app? Or is that not reliable enough, or is that something that's ever been considered? Because that is expensive.
It has been discussed, but it is not reliable enough. We can't rely on third-party vendors for our public safety.
Got it.
If we did, and we do have apps on our phones to help us with mapping, but it's not our first route of communication. That would be relying on somebody to pay their cellphone bill, keep their app up to date, current, et cetera, so.
Sure.
So, I don't expect a yes or no answer from you. I just wanted to come and, I guess, explain some of that to you. And maybe entertain the idea of using that money towards our final purchase payment for the building.
So, I have, go ahead, George.
My question was about the hundred and twenty-two thousand you, you received in fire state aid, supplemental state aid. Was, do you receive that every year?
We do, and that goes directly into our firefighter pension account. We do not see or touch that money.
Do you recall what it was last year? If we could get, if I could get that figure, that'd be nice.
Sure.
Just wanna do some comparisons here.
Sure. But to clarify, that isn't something that's in our budget. It goes right from the state into our pension account. It's not part of our budget even. But I can provide it, absolutely.
So, my biggest question when I heard about this was, what are the other cities gonna do to contribute? You know, the city of Bram, city of Cambridge, everybody that's in our fire district, we kind of share the resource. So, my biggest thing is, I would like, if we're going to, say, we're gonna do the thirty-nine percent hypothetically, I would like to challenge Cambridge and Bram and everybody else to match their percentage, because they all, they're all allocating money, and we all use it kind of equally, so I would like to, if we're.
So, the fire district doesn't include Cambridge or Bram, but I, I get what you're saying, though, but it's, it's the townships that we are partnered with.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not totally familiar with what's in the fire district and not, but that was my biggest thing, is I don't want the city residents to to lose out on, on PD stuff for, if it's not gonna be equal amongst every other community that's in the fire district. The city of Isani people shouldn't have to, I guess, give more than the rest, like, what, what, who else is in there? Athens Township, and, I mean, that's, that's my concern. I would, I would be okay with the thirty-nine percent personally. But that's only if the other areas that are in the fire district would be willing to contribute their fair share as well of what they got from the state.
And I don't think they got anything from the state, right?
They didn't get anything?
Cities and counties only, and tribal government.
But wasn't it?
It would have been filtered through the Sheriff's Office. They got credit for those residents, residents in Athens. North Branch Town Public Service was credited through the Sheriff's Office allocation.
So, is the Sheriff's, is the Sheriff's Office going to do anything for, for you guys? Do you know as far as that allocation of that stuff?
For fire, no, not that I know of.
Can, can staff reach out to some other cities similar to our size and structure, and see what they are doing with their state aid, if they're splitting up? But it would have to be a city with a fire district.
Council Heeman, I, I did reach out to one today that I found that was as close, similar, was Cloquet. You know, the city of Cloquet, reasonable size, and they have a fire district that has townships. I don't think they have any other cities up there, so I reached out to their city administrator and asked him how that went, or what they did. He said that their fire district requested, and, and they denied based on exactly what Councilman Merrill was talking about, just that they, they couldn't justify subsidizing the townships with funding, you know, because they, they're broke down in a percentage. I don't know what their formula is, but that was their basis for not doing it was subsid, or not wanting to subsidize the townships.
I, yeah, I hate to even say it, if the, if county or nobody else is gonna contribute to this, we can't take it away from the city residents, even though it's, it's a, it's a joint, you know, a joint fire department. It's not really fair if only one entity pays for it, not the rest. You know, so I, I mean, I would guess, I would hope that the county would wanna contribute something as well, but I wouldn't be for contributing anything if it's just gonna be a one-sided deal, because that's not fair to the Isani residents.
Well, on the flip side, how much was engine one?
Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
City pays forty, forty-five percent of that, and that sits at Station One. So, technically, in that situation, won't they be subsidizing us?
Yeah, but what about the other stations that are outside of the city limits? I mean, we pay our percentage, that's, I, I just.
Well, that, that.
It goes both ways, but.
That fire truck does not stay within city limits. If something happened with outside city limits, it's, it's on its way.
But it sits at Station One, twenty-four seven, until it's used.
And the ladder truck is significantly for the city's ISO rating, that the townships paid all but thirty-nine percent of, and Station One, six hundred thousand dollar building, we service the townships around us from that building.
It's all about cost sharing. It goes both ways, so.
And that's exactly my point.
It saves taxpayers money.
Which taxpayers, I mean, we're. I mean, I gotta look after the city of Isani residents.
Right. That's why I say the county, I mean, the, the balls and the other, I mean, if they got money from the state based on the people that live in Athens Township, and the people that are in our fire district, well, the county should be responsible, or should be willing to put something in towards fire department as well, and that's, that's how I would be okay with it. Otherwise, you're really putting the burden on your Isani residents, which is who we represent. And I love the fire department, don't get me wrong, but that was, when I came into it, I just thought, well, it has to be kind of an equal share, like we share everything else somehow or some way. That's my opinion.
Cost sharing puts both ways.
Question on the Sheriff's Office, I talked to Sheriff Cyberlick, and they went to their board, I wanna say at the end of last year, and appropriated their funds. I think five hundred thousand dollars went to retention bonuses for employees, and the other five hundred went to equipment or something, so that was allocated at a December meeting, I believe, or maybe November somewhere last year.
You know, I guess, I mean, have you approached the townships at all and, and said, I mean, hey, the, you know, maybe, I mean, I guess you had to have, maybe have this conversation first here, but, but I mean, it sounds like maybe we're willing to, to contribute some, if the other townships are willing to do some of the same, you know, I mean, that would be kinda where you guys are at.
But they don't have the money.
They don't have the money, like, that, that they, they didn't get the same money, so I don't know that, you know, to, to ask them to just take money out of, out of the budget is different than, you know, we've got money that we were just handed over, right?
So, why didn't the county have this discussion? I mean, they know they got paid for residents that live in the county, but then they don't allocate it towards those specific areas. That's not very fair.
I'm guessing because the county doesn't provide fire service. They provide law, Sheriff's Office, jail.
Well, I know we need to get our, our planning, maybe we wanna come back to this in just a minute and stuff, or you guys wanna wrap this discussion up, or what are you, what are you guys feeling?
Uh, well, we have, we have a little more time to make a decision on this.
We do, yeah, let, I'll tell you what, let's just, if I can get a motion to recess, let's go ahead and, and recess for right now. If you guys don't mind hanging out, maybe for just a little bit, and we'll, we'll get this planning meeting underway here, and then.
A motion to recess.
So, I have a motion to recess this meeting from Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero, and we'll pick this up again after the planning meeting, so.